Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the March 19th, 2025 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Kozak?
Here.
Kelly Mulvoyn-Mangan?
Here. Sorry.
Benjamin Blaustein?
Here.
Samantha Jaberga?
Here.
Placido Dino Puccio?
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr.?
Yeah.
Jerome Valente?
Here.
Please note the fire exits in front and in the back of the room.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have a teacher and student matter to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the March 19th, 2025 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Kozak?
Here.
Kelly Mulvoyn-Mangan?
Here.
Benjamin Blaustein?
Here.
Samantha Jaberga?
Here.
Placido Dino Puccio?
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr.?
Here.
Jerome Valente?
Here.
Please note the fire exits in the front and the back of the room.
Thank you, Michelle. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. We're going to take a moment of silence at the end to honor the life of Gia Gentile, who recently passed after a courageous battle with cancer, and just to acknowledge that our hearts and prayers are sent to the Gentile family. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have once at a minute from the March 4th, 2025 business meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the Board of Education, you may do so by approaching the podium and just please state your first and last name if you do. Okay, it does not appear that we have any public participation. Just some exciting news district-wide. Our high school debate team, we had three members qualify for the NCFL, which is the National Championship this past weekend. Jack Borman, Brooke Seano, and Jack Gesner, and all three will represent Harrison in Chicago on Memorial Day weekend. Big congrats to Reese Potash as well on placing fifth out of 135 debaters last weekend at the Digital Speech and Debate National Championship, and to Jack Gesner on placing seventh, and Andrew Gathen on 17th. So, congrats to our ever impressive debate team. We also recently had a bunch of students attend the New York State Science and Engineering Fair, and the following five students, with their outstanding research, on the March 24th, we had three seniors, Yassin Osman, Samantha Ramirez, Amasimo Riali, and two juniors, Liam Mazhar and Chase Endy. So, congrats to all of our young scientists. A few weeks ago, we had the DECA business team had a record-breaking success at the New York State DECA competition. It was the largest attendance in competitions history with over 3,000 students, and 11 of our students qualified to compete at Nationals. And just most noteworthy, Addison Valente, for the third year in a row, placed first and has qualified for Nationals. Jonathan Lewis, this is his second time in a row, well, I don't know about in a row, second time qualifying for Nationals. So, we're super proud of all of our students, and I know Mr. Santo was very proud as well. So, congrats to those. Were you going to add something?
Mr. Santo was floating around Ms. Bukema's office when I saw him last. He was very proud.
Yes, very successful club. Oh, this is exciting, and the first I've ever actually heard of this. One of our high school juniors, Natalie Olivia Corn, was elected as a board member to the Girl Scout Heart of the Hudson Board of Directors for the 2025-26 year, and she's been a member for many years on the Girl Scouts and currently working on her Gold of War. She's an IB diploma candidate, editor-in-chief of the Husky Herald Violinist in the String Ensemble, and Writing Fellow in our Writing Center. So, very well-rounded student, and we're just excited for her and all her accomplishments. We recently had the Relay for Life kickoff over at the high school, which was last week on March 11th in the gym. It was like teacher versus teacher basketball game to raise money and awareness for funds to fight against cancer. And student leaders of the Relay for Life team and their advisors, Phil DeJoye and Matthew Rodaslovich, will continue their efforts to build awareness. May 31st is the big event, I believe, that we always have, 4 to 9 p.m.
I'm just smiling because Mrs. Morbeto was in the game.
She had a stellar performance, but nothing can compete with Mr. Aronello's Eyes Closed
Five Pointer. Hope and a prayer, but good job, Anthony. We were all rooting for you.
That's fun.
It was lots of fun. The kids did a great job.
And also, congratulations to all of our LMK, Middle School Student Scientists and Engineers who presented at the fair just last week on March 10. Yeah, and also, just a reminder, a couple of calendar things. Thursday, this is tomorrow, tomorrow and Friday, all elementary schools have a half-day for parent-teacher conferences, and I know that there's been a lot of questions about the unused snow day, and I believe Dr. Ladwig will be sending out an email district-wide early April just to confirm if we get off. It would be April 21st, which is the Monday after break. So, he will notify everyone, as long as we don't have like a spring storm coming up. And I believe that concludes my update.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everybody. We have a lot to just take a pause and update you on. You're seeing a lot of work going on in and around our district. Let me just explain some of what's going on. If you're at Parsons School, actually, Mrs. Morbeto got a tour of the third floor. It is looking quite good. The sheetrock is up. Our team is moving really, really quickly. But there are also people working on the roof this week. We had people up on the roof. Tim and I were touring that, so that work is well underway. We planned pretty soon, within the next month or so, you should start to see new windows appearing at the Parsons School. If you're looking on the high school campus, you may already notice that over 130 windows have already been installed on the high school. That's long overdue. We've been waiting for those new windows since 1974, so I think it's time. We're excited about that. We are planning to start the baseball field renovation sometime April, am I April 14th or mid-April? So, there's a lot moving there. We are continuing to prepare for lots of other work this summer. We're going to have renovations occurring in the Harrison Avenue School main office. We're going to have a groundbreaking of the new addition over at Purchase School also in early spring. The playground over at Purchase School is also going to be updated a little bit in the next, probably over the April break. And some of the siding that's not quite completed on the exterior of this building, which is now open and we're enjoying, will also be done in April. I always want to bring your attention to those things for two reasons. One, to know there's an awful lot of work going on behind the scenes that people don't see that are having a benefit to your kids, and also because I like to remind people that we have an extraordinary crew here that continue to keep all of these things moving. Particularly, our new director of facilities doing outstanding job, Kevin Garvey, coordinating all these projects, our maintenance foreman, Peter Spassato, and you met our entire crew last time where we acknowledged their hard work. That hasn't abated even in the least. I was at the Strings Extravaganza last night. I don't know what we're going to do next year, that's all I will tell you. Mrs. Mangan joined us there. 380 players on the stage and in the pit and coming up the aisles, over 1,000 people, 240 cars parked safely on the campus. Thank you to the crew up at the high school for coordinating that. And Mr. Nicol and I are on our annual endless set of nights, and Andy, we've started, haven't we? And I said, he needs a wide-angle lens that's beyond belief to capture that. But when will that go up? Do you know?
Tomorrow or Friday.
If you haven't experienced the Strings Extravaganza, it's not a very long program, but it is magnificent. And if you haven't heard our high school orchestra, it is breathtaking. They are so good. It is absolutely phenomenal. And I was just reminded by my longstanding colleague and board trustee, Rob Sullivan, who was the first year in that program?
Michelle.
Yes.
I'm Michelle.
Michelle Sullivan was the first child to ever start in the orchestra program, and she's now happily married and long out of college, so.
And not playing.
And not playing anymore. That was not the endorsement I was looking for.
She had a wonderful experience.
She had a wonderful experience. Also, I want to recognize Noah Platt. He's just had one success after another. If you saw Mary Poppins, it was a technical, extraordinary experience to manage technically. We had kids flying and lights and constant changing of sets and scenes, and he does such a great job with the kids. But last night, the kids ran that ridiculously complicated program of 380 kids under his direction, and he's just doing a great job. And I'm proud to say he's a graduate of Harrison High School, one of the first kids to ever go through our tech theater program, has a degree in technical theater, and has gone on to make it a career. And I'm going to take a pause here. Lisa Mulholland, my assistant superintendent, has been beyond spectacular since her arrival here. We continue to move every single project. PYP moves closer and closer to a reality. We're not going to talk about that tonight because she doesn't want to steal thunder from the principals. But there was one piece of news I thought you should share. Before you do, Lisa has pushed everybody in the organization to get out more and present more at the local and national level, including yours truly. She's making me very tired. But we have some very exciting announcement to share about our Director of Guidance and one of our guidance councils. We're really proud of this. Lisa, would you mind talking about that for a minute?
Sure. So, Mrs. Malcheski, our Director of School Counseling, and Mrs. Hayen will be presenting on their family engagement work at the IB World Conference this July in New Orleans. So, we're really proud of them. It was a very rigorous process. Most of the time, you just present a written proposal. This time was the written proposal along with a video sample of what their presentation would be like. So, we're really excited for them, and we're excited to see what the experience is like.
I'm really excited. They worked so hard on that, and Kelly is one of those, another shining example. We're going to talk more about our Future School Leaders Program, but Kelly was a math teacher here who went on to become an administrator and has done a magnificent job, continues to do a magnificent job as Director of Guidance, and is one of the best public presenters that we have. So, we're really excited, and Mrs. Hayen as well. Congratulations to both of them. There's not much else I want to talk about tonight because we have a pretty full agenda, and I'm going to ask when we do the personnel report that we take things out of order because there's sort of something special happening here tonight. So, thank you, Madam President.
Yeah. Do you want to do the budget presentation?
I thought we would do that first and then, because the budget presentation is long, and then we'll let her go home.
Run through.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to go slightly out of order, but moving on to the personnel report, I will start with A and move on to item number three. And I will take on consent unless anyone objects.
Well, actually, we're not going to take a consent. I can take A first.
Okay, right. So, just, okay. So, A, certificated personnel, and three, regular appointment and SED clearance received. Do I have a motion to approve item three?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? We do have questions. Well, we do have comments, but we're going to go ahead and approve, and then we will.
Do you want to read to everybody what you're approving, just so they know?
Yes. A, Fiona Young's regular substitute, item number 2020, 2240, and B, Jennifer Ronaldo, for being our assistant principal at the Lewis and Stein Middle School. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Motion carries. And before we go too much further, I'm going to ask my very esteemed and dear friend and extraordinary middle school principal, who has nurtured and mentored so many people, it's almost impossible to realize. So, Jennifer has Noah, actually, she does. How lucky she is to have this person to guide this part of her career. But Scott, would you come up and just introduce Jennifer to us?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I guess that comes with age a little, you know, if you're long enough, you do that. It's interesting. The other day, we had a panel of students, and when I left, I thought to myself, because they were, I think, quite remarkable, some of you were there, that they deserve to have their next assistant principal meet up to their expectations. And I have to tell you, it gets me excited as a principal, even after all these years, to be able to have somebody who's coming on board, who comes with a wealth of knowledge, a caring, a want to be in the building and work with children. It feels like Jen has already been there, but I'm really excited that Jen's going to be with us. She comes from Parsons and was recognized as a wonderful teacher. I had many, many people, parents, students in the building, say, have you thought about Ms. Ronaldo, Mr. Food? Well, sometimes, you know, information comes to me in different ways, and at the end of the day, through a quite rigorous process.
I'm not kidding.
With a lot of candidates and people, at the end of the day, Jen shined, and we are really excited. So, you've already heard the name, but let me introduce our newest LMK assistant principal to join the family here.
Can't wait to meet her.
Ms. Jennifer Ronaldo.
Thank you, Scott. Poor Jen, I didn't tell her she was speaking to me. She's good on her feet, though.
Thank you, Scott. First, I want to thank the administrative team, the board, for this opportunity, because I am both excited but also deeply honored to join the LMK family. And I have learned just in my short time here in my Director of ENL and World Language role that this truly is a tight-knit community that I'm very excited to join. Scott sent out an email to staff just a few hours ago, and the outpouring of email and text messages that I've already received just welcoming me to LMK has been really wonderful. So, I'm looking forward to meeting the rest of the staff members that I haven't yet met. Really looking forward to meet, I know many of the Parsons students at LMK, but I'm really looking forward to meeting all of the other students and families as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We're excited to have you.
And Jen is another product of just great mentoring and a real, I want to shout out to Mark Woodard and Stephanie Goldman, who recommended you to me to become a member of the FSLA cohort. You immediately shined. You filled in as an assistant principal there while Stephanie was out on leave, and you did instructional coaching work. So, this is a young woman that is completely prepared for this job. That's why I haven't seen Scott have this much fry in his step in a long time. So, I'm really excited.
I have a little left in the time.
And it's just so nice to have colleagues from both the middle school and at Parsons School here to support her tonight. So, thank you and congratulations. And you can all feel free to go home, because tomorrow's your first day on the job, and we want you to be full of energy. All right, now we have to get to the work at hand. My hardest-working colleague.
Let you want to sit through the budget. Go. Honestly, that's why we went out of order.
I think I have a really hard job, and I love my job. I do not love Tim's job. Let me just say that. It's much more difficult and challenging than people understand. There are so many nuances to managing public education institutions. There are so many rules, you could almost lose your mind just trying to figure them out. So, we're going to start tonight with a brief sort of reprieve of one or two slides, and then mostly, I'm going to turn it over to Tim, but my esteemed colleague, Dr. Ladwig, is doing what he always does, which is working as hard as he can to support the organization. So, he's in Cortland tonight, sleeping near the cows while he recruits teachers at a teacher recruitment fair at the Cortland State University. So, this is budget development. This is our second presentation, I believe, right? Tim?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, very quickly, to remind everybody, there's a framework that the board is bound by, the tax levy cap formula. And so, we don't necessarily get to do what it is we want to do. We are required to live within this tax levy cap or to seek a 60% voter approval, an override, to spend more than that. Our challenge has been, above all else, this surging enrollment. We have a great vision for our program. We've had to slow it down a little bit, and last year, you may recall, we were successful introducing Phase 1 of oral languages at the elementary school. Unfortunately, due to growing enrollment and other kinds of fiscal challenges, we are sort of holding off on any program growth. So, just, that's the big framework. I'm not going to go over all of those things. The big program priorities really never change much. How do we make sure that every child gets what they need? How do we make this program coherent so that kids are, and their approach to learning is being reinforced in the same ways, only with more complexity year after year? That's why we're trying so hard to have a unified program kindergarten through 12. The IB provides us with a coherent instructional approach, coherent instructional language. We're working really hard to make sure we're clinically examining from multiple perspectives every child's growth, every child's achievement, how they're progressing as human beings, so the multiple measure model is a big part of what we do. In the end, we want children who come through this system to feel like they were not only seen, but they were valued, and that they were nurtured to become the best versions of themselves. That's a very high bar. We do that by focusing on class sizes, high-quality teaching, professional development, and having multiple opportunities for kids to pick a pathway that makes sense for them. Having said all that, here's what we're trying to hold on to. How can we continue to support our faculty, give them the training they need? I'll never compromise on that because there's nothing more important than a highly-trained teacher. Multiple measures means we have to find different tools and ways to measure kids. We're going to continue to push the IB program, and ultimately, everybody will be, I think, a little bit more open to thinking with and learning from one another. We're going to focus on class size. Class size is always at the core of what we do. If you ask teachers to do difficult tasks, you have to try to maintain class sizes. The greatest stressor on us right now, and you'll learn this later, is we have no way of knowing how much growth we're going to experience. If you look back last year, everybody thought that our demographic study was too aggressive, and it ended up, we got more kids than they predicted. People want to live here. They value the community. They love the schools. That's all a wonderful thing. The challenge for our district is how do we keep pace with the surge that we're experiencing? All of these things, I'm not going to go over too much. We are going to maintain the programs that we have. Right now, I would define this budget as, our hope is to maintain what we have. If we're able to do that amidst surging enrollment, that would be a good thing. I'm looking to do one thing. I mentioned the teaching assistant, Noah Platt. I'd like to bring him on as a teaching assistant, because I think that would give some stability to the multitude of arts programs we have and all of the technical support it requires. Beyond that, there's not a lot in the budget to talk about. Tim, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much, Dr. Wool, and welcome everyone. Before I get started, I did give you a couple of new documents tonight that you can, you know, maintain in your budget binder at some point. There was the updated budget expenditure sheet, as well as a new revenue projection. And as the board knows, you know, the budget process is a journey, right? So, every meeting, we have more information to share with you, and we'll continue to do that as we meet. But tonight, we're going to talk about the expenditure side of the budget. So, we'll leave the revenue to next time, but tonight, we do have a pretty good summary of what to expect for our expenditures and our cost drivers for next year. And really, you know, this is, it really boils down to three really main categories, is enrollment growth. You know, we continue to see significant enrollment growth. We've talked about this, you know, ad nauseam for multiple meetings now and multiple years, but we continue to see the trend of new students coming into our schools. Employee benefits and health insurance costs, these are areas that still, for the second year in a row, have continued to escalate higher than the national averages, it appears. So, that's obviously going to be a challenge. And then, we also have different operational costs, tuition for students who attend out-placed facilities, related services like OTPTs and nursing services, our property insurance continues to be a hard market. Those are some of the things that we will run up against this year. So, just to talk about our, the programmatic priorities, and Dr. will jump in if you would like.
Sure.
But we started the year, and the 24-25 year, having to add two unbudgeted positions, almost three. So, 1.7 elementary teachers were necessary to fulfill the enrollment requirements that we had at the beginning of the year. We also were required to add a teaching assistant for a very specialized classroom for students that were classified with disabilities. In this upcoming budget, we have a prioritized list here of not any particular order, so not prioritized by what you see here, but our administrators continue to obviously advocate and let the central administrators know exactly what's necessary in their schools for next year. And these are items that we've identified as the most necessary, and we have added these to the budget. So, one of the changes that you've seen this time was an increase from the original draft budget that we gave you a few weeks ago to now including these positions in the budget, because we feel like these are significantly necessary for next year. All in all, we're looking at 6.8 new FTEs, and FTE is considered a full-time equivalent employee, and this has a budgetary impact of about $600,000, including salary and employee benefits for these individuals.
And, you know, we're going to go back with the entire team, because the budget is proving to be, as we anticipated, quite a challenge. So, I can't promise necessarily which of these positions, if any, will survive. We're hopeful that some will. We're going to obviously prioritize the need, the academic needs of kids above everything else.
Yeah, what I thought I would do is kind of just go over the highlights of the main cost drivers and, you know, and the expenditure budget. Obviously, you know, we're a people business. The employee salary costs and employee benefits are the significant portion of what we see driving the budget. Inclusive of those 6.8 new positions that we have included for next year, looking at about $1.6 million, which is only, you know, about 2%, so we really take a lot of pride in having fantastic relationships with our bargaining units. We've been able to work with them to have very reasonable increases that we believe fall within the CPI or the Consumer Price Index. I would say that this is inclusive of 12 teaching retirements that we do have next year. So, we did generate significant savings as a result of these individuals retire. As you would expect, you know, you have a teacher who's been here for multiple years, and we plan to replace with a less senior teacher, so there are some savings that we would achieve there. Teacher and employee retirement plans, very, very reasonable this year. We've seen these fluctuate from year to year significantly based on stock market returns. Both retirement systems have very reasonable increases next year, so that's not really a huge driver. But as you can see here, the health insurance is really one that, you know, is definitely causing an issue in terms of, you know, meeting that tax cap maximum, close to 10%. Again, remember that when a teacher retires, they maintain their health plan in retirement, but we have to add a new health plan for the incoming teachers. So, we're actually adding new health plans every single year. So, it's not just the increase for the current staff, it's actually the increase for the future staff as well. So, that is something that we track very, very closely. And then, the other really large driver, as you can see this year, is relates to kind of the special education, tuition and related services for students who have significant needs based on an individual plan that they have. OTPT nursing, we're finding that these services that students are requiring are quite significant, and this is, you know, forcing us to increase these quite significantly next year. Transportation, we're in, next year will be year three of a four-year contract, so... Transportation, we're in, next year will be year three of a four-year contract, so we're looking right about 3.5% for our transportation increase with first student. Electricity and natural gas, as I said before, you know, we're, it seems like we're just trying to play catch-up with the electricity. You've all heard about the ConEd rate increases that will occur, and we're no exception to those increases as well. Liability, property, student accident insurance, again, you know, I sound like a broken record, but if you look at your own homeowner policy or your own car insurance, you know, we all are experiencing significant increases in those categories. We're having to continue to try to deal with those, and, you know, although it's not a big dollar amount in terms of our budget, it is a, almost a 12% increase next year. So, all in all...
Just want to pause there and recognize, you know, many of us do lots of work to try to keep costs down. Tim participates on the Board of NYSER, works with this consortium across the state to try to keep rates down on insurance. There are things that we are doing that are sometimes not visible to the public, that demand a lot on our employees. I sit as the Chair, the President of Swiss chip, try to keep health insurance costs down. To the extent that we can control regional costs, I just want to say that the team is doing their very best to do that. So want to acknowledge that work, Tim.
Yeah, thank you. I would also remind the board that a couple of years ago, we started to participate in a natural gas consortium amongst our neighbors here in Westchester, and that has helped keep natural gas costs down. So the increase that you see here of about 140,000 really is driven significantly, or 100% by the electricity bill. Our natural gas has regulated and stabilized somewhat. All in all, total increases in expenditures next year, 5.8 million, around 4%. The other items that you would typically find in the budget, social security, I didn't add here, BOSI's cost for software programs, internet services, all those things, not significant, but also make up the balance of that 5.8 million dollars for next year. Okay, so all New York State school districts must present their budgets in three parts to the taxpayers, so we are very consistent, and we like to show our budget in the three major components, which is the program, administrative, and capital components. I'm not going to read all of these, all of these things to you, but you can see a nice summary below in each of these categories that would explain, you know, what are the specific expenses that would be in these particular buckets. Obviously, program is all the instruction that we do for students, not just the teachers and the teaching assistants, but also the transportation program, the guidance program, the health, vocational, everything you can think of that either gets a student to school or helps educate them while they're here is really in the program component. And you'll see that that's a very significant increase next year, 3.9% or about 4.3 million dollars. The other significant, in terms of percentage, not so much the dollar amount, would be the capital component, and we're seeing that increase a little bit higher than typical. Obviously, we have salaries and benefits for all our custodial and our maintenance employees, but we also have some new debt service that will come on as a result of our capital project. However, this is offset by other earnings that you will see in the next meeting in terms of revenue that offsets some of that. So although the increase is a little bit higher than you would normally see, you'll see in a subsequent meeting how we have revenue coming and that'll offset that. So there'll be really no impact on the capital project for the taxpayers at this particular point.
Really good point.
And I like to, you know, we put this in last year because we thought it was, it was an interesting couple of slides to show, you know, what's the history of budget increases compared to the CPI. And if, just to remind you, the CPI stands for Consumer Price Index, which is really the measure of inflation. And we take a lot of pride in being at or below the CPI for both the budget and the tax increase, okay? You can see, obviously, the last couple of years, we've had huge spikes in the CPI. I'll go to the tax levy increase, which is even, which is even a greater story, in my opinion. You know, the CPI increase, on an average of a 10-year period, has been 2.75%, where we've been able to keep the tax levy increases at 2.2%. So we feel like we've been recommending and supporting budgets that have been very reasonable and, you know, for the taxpayers, and they get a lot, they get a lot, they get a huge bang for their buck based on what we've been able to maintain here and add every year. Just to remind you again, the tax levy increase two years ago was 2.85%, the CPI was 4.7%. The year after that, we were looking at a 1.79 tax levy increase, again, which is the total amount we collect from our taxpayers, and the CPI was 8% that year. So over those two years, we were really in a tough spot to be able to manage the budget based on the amount of inflation that was occurring all around us, obviously just after, you know, the COVID years. Last year, if you remember, obviously, was the first year where we were, we had to kind of play catch-up, and was the year that we did the tax levy override, just to try to make up for those two previous years. I'm not going to spend too much time on this, but I, but I do want to mention that, you know, a big part of what we do on a yearly basis is a capital allocation, because we, you know, our goal is really to provide, you know, learning spaces that are welcoming, clean, healthy, with technology that enables students to do their best work. And the board has made a long-term commitment to increase the capacity of our facilities and include an allocation within the general fund budget of about $2 million every year for these other projects that are a little bit bigger than just repairs and maintenance of our facilities. These are, these are larger-type projects, typically would go out to bid for these type of things. Sometimes they require state education approval. So these are the items that we have on our radar for this summer and throughout the year. The Harrison Ave auditorium improvements, we were talking to Dr. Wool about this, and he gave us the green light. He said that's something that has been, you know, overlooked for many years, and we're excited to be able to do some improvements to Harrison Ave after we just did those to Preston last summer. Floor replacements, we have a major electric switchgear and breaker upgrade replacement at the high school. The Parsons retaining wall repairs were approved at the board being at the last meeting, so they will start this summer. So we're excited about that. We've got some air conditioning, heating, ventilation upgrades, bleachers and scoreboards. I mentioned a little bit of this at our last meeting, but all in all, the total budget for our, you know, in-district capital plan will be about 1.9 million next year. And again, I won't go on too much about this, and Dr. Wool kind of teed this up for me, but we always, at every opportunity we can get, to try to remind the public and our school community of what's happening with our bond update. And I included the website here just below this, so if anybody would like to log on, Mrs. Tiberzi, who helps us out with our communications, she's done an outstanding job along with Michael Hauer, to get a great website up for all the ongoing improvements for our 2023 bond project. So I would encourage you to go look there. But, you know, happening right now in the spring of '25 is, we have window projects happening. We have a multipurpose turf field improvement at the high school. The Parsons third floor will be completely renovated, which includes six new classrooms. And the Harrison High School classroom, which you will be reviewing tonight as an approval, will include four new classrooms. So that's what's happening right now. And then this summer, we have a few other things that'll happen. Right After School starts to, starts to get out, which is the start of the Purchase Elementary Classroom addition. We'll be improving the security vestibule at Harrison Avenue School and the relocated main office to improve our security there. And the relocation also of the special education classroom. So a lot going on in the next few months, and we are excited to keep pictures and updates on our website for everyone to stay in touch with all the, all the work that's happening out there. School enrollment, so I think maybe I'll kick it back to Dr. Wool, and he can go, this is something that Brian usually does, but I think he's got a...
I think I can handle it. Can you go back one slide, though?
Yep.
Isn't that a great picture? I just love those two boys smiling at me, that's made my night. I need happy faces. So I mentioned at the outset, one of the things that makes us so successful is the quality of our teachers, but the other is our class sizes. And these are our average class sizes across the grade span, elementary, middle, and high. In elementary, you know, we try really hard to target 22. We are sometimes slightly above and sometimes slightly below, but these are averages. And as somebody who was a classroom teacher for 18 years, the difference between 22 and 24 is big, when you're teaching English, or 24 and 26. I will tell you, one of my fears, I'm just sharing this with the board, is as the enrollment surges and we have so many other needs to be met, it is possible that at some point that these numbers could rise a little bit. We're going to do our best to mitigate it, but I don't want to ever hide the ball. There are many challenges in this budget, and we have the most talented faculty, I'm not kidding you, in the United States. They're so highly trained. One or two kids will be a little bit more of a burden, but it won't change the outcome or the product or the experience for kids. But please be mindful that some of the things that are impacting this school district are not within the district's control. The next slide talks a little bit about some of the things that are out of our control, the number of developments. That top shows you the aggregate of the number of projects across the district by category, those completed, those under construction, some that are in the approval process, some that are under review, and you can see it's a little over 2,200. Then if you go down to the next slide, you can see where that breaks out by school zone, by school catchment. So clearly, Purchase and Harrison Avenue are the most, I'm sorry, Purchase and Parsons are the most impacted. Particularly, look at the bottom line for Purchase, if that is to be realized, 1,890 units. Now, that is not to say that all of those units will produce children, but our demographers are predicting, as you'll see in the next few slides, significant growth. And I just want to pause here because the board is well aware of this, but to say to the public, we've experienced a surge in enrollment. That surge in enrollment has not come yet from these new developments. The surge in enrollment is turnover of existing housing stock because of the desirability of living in this community, and I would argue, especially because of the success and the desirability of our schools. That's a good problem, but it is a problem. Because if we're going to maintain the quality of the experience we want to provide, as more children come, more space is required, more resources are required. Next slide. So the, now we're looking at the large-scale developments, and I will tell you that the one that has most recently been talked about is not on this list. I've forgotten, Michelle, what is the address of that one? What street is that on?
It's Grant. That's like the street behind Oakland Avenue.
Grant, yeah, right, right by, behind sort of the supermarket area there, right along the field area where there's the park, right, the Berlanti building, that general area. That is not on here. So if you're watching at home, we didn't have that in our demographers' report, we will update it, but the Caraway, obviously, at Purchase, Avalon, everybody knows where Avalon is in Parsons, Calvert Street, which is finally reaching conclusion, Westchester Park, Halsted Avenue, Webb Avenue, Renaissance Hotel, these are just the large ones, and the other one at Westchester Avenue. And you can see also when they're likely to come online and the number of units. So when people ask us, what are we doing to plan, the answer is everything we can possibly think of. We're getting the most up-to-date information that we can possibly get from the planning board, we're handing it over to our demographers, we're asking them to apply the best possible metrics to predict the future, and they will tell you that this is a very difficult community to predict where it's going because the rapid growth of housing stock and the rapid rate of enrollment not connected to that new housing stock creates a tidal wave that they've not seen in many places. If you look at the next slide, the historic projected K5 enrollment, historic and projected, did I skip a slide?
Yeah, it's on the bottom.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My apologies. There we go. So how do you like that? I think it looks like we're going to rise in enrollment. So this is 2024, 3789, and they're saying we're going to crest in 2033. I don't know if I'll be here, but it's possible. We're going to have a lot of kids. And the question is, could we accommodate another 1,000 kids? The odds are no. We would have to build more buildings. That's in the future. We don't know if these projections will hold or not, but this is what the demographers are saying, based on everything we know about you now, this is the general direction your community is going. And so the board's responsibility and mine is, how do we prepare for this? And how do we be mindful of the impact on taxpayers? How do we mitigate those costs? But we, I want you to know that we have been very proactive. Members of the board and I have met with the current mayor, the prior mayor, the planning board, doing the very best we can to keep people informed that it's not the same for a school district to keep pace with the ability of a community to develop. It takes at least three to four years from inception to actually opening a school. There's so many steps that have to be followed. Studies have to be done, approvals have to be gained, the bond has to be approved, the state has to approve it, architects have to design it. So it's a very challenging wave we're trying to surf here. This is the K5 enrollment, pick your elementary school and get on the train. If you're looking at Purchase School, you're the green line. That is slated to go up almost by 100 kids, and this is by 2033. You can see it crests and goes down, so 446, 2028 is the high. But if you just slide up to the blue one, where there's no development going on, you can see that we're looking at an elementary school, Harrison Avenue School, of approximately 650 kids. That's a lot of kids. And remember, when we're talking about class sizes of 22, that means you're trying to build classes to accommodate that scale. It's not as if you're going to increase those. And then the high school enrollment and the middle school enrollment on the next slide are equally staggering. Mr. Freed, I don't know if he'll be here in 2032, we can only hope, but he's going to go from his current high of 922 to a little over, just under 1,100 kids. And I'm going to argue, these projections are wrong. They're going to be higher because you don't build 2,000 units of housing and have this, half the kids. People are moving here because they love this community and they love these schools. So we are keeping a mindful watch on it. The next slide is a point of pride for us. This just demonstrates that many years ago, this community sent a lot of its children by choice to private school, and we have decreased that number by almost 10% over the years. That's because people see the inherent value in the education children receive in the Harrison Central District and are making a decision to send their kids to public school as opposed to private school. These are people who have the ability and the means to make choices, and they're choosing Harrison, which is a good problem, but it is also exacerbating the enrollment growth. And now we're going to go to the magic formula, Timothy.
Yeah, so I'll...
Sorry, Dr. Wool, can I just...
Absolutely, you want to go back a slide?
Well, no, just on the enrollment.
Yes.
Just so the community knows, we are advocating as a board and individually through other work that we do on the Westchester Putnam School Board and the Lower Hudson Council, in other states that have tax levy caps, they have formulas that account for enrollment growth, so that there would be a way in which you would be able to recognize the fact that you have more students, and then you would automatically get additional, the ability to have additional funds in your budget. There are many problems with the New York State tax cap formula, but one of the ones that we are continuing to advocate for, and I say this not with a huge amount of hope that it will actually change, but just so the community knows, we are advocating and continuing to have conversations with people, sharing the idea, or sharing the, or recognizing the fact that there are communities that are having increased enrollment, and the inability of the tax cap formula to account for that enrollment is really challenging for those districts. You can see from these numbers, you know, what the Consumer Price Index was and what, how many more students we have, and there's nothing we get to do in the formula to address that. So just so the community knows, we're raising it and talking about it.
And Mrs. Mangan has sat on the board of the Westchester Putnam School Board Association for many, many years and advocated over and over again for substantial and significant changes that would make a difference, not just for Harrison, but for all school districts. You know, there's an irony to what she observed. So you don't get more money if you get more kids, but you lose money if kids go away. We're looking at a neighboring city school district that's lost in excess of 3,000 kids, they're probably not going to be able to operate their school system because they're losing resources. losing resources. We don't get any more money for having more kids. We're also advocating Tim's organization and mine, we, all of us have met with our state legislators to change the regional cost index, which would be the biggest change that could ever happen, to help us get reasonable amount of cost of living aid. Right now, we get less than Long Island, and if you live here, you know it costs at least as much to live in Westchester as it does in Long Island, and they haven't even equalized that. I'm cautiously optimistic because both the Senate bill and the Assembly bill are calling for a change in the regional cost index, which could in fact help us. So a good reminder, even though it is a budget presentation, we do a lot of advocacy on behalf of better policies as a, as a board, as a superintendent, as an assistant superintendent. So thanks for bringing that up, Kelly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I probably won't go through this again because the board has heard this at our last meeting, and, um, obviously, we're all well aware of, of the, how the limit is calculated. I think, I think the second slide really is, we'll just kind of sum it up. The current year levy, um, is 123.7 million, and this again is the total amount that we collect from the taxpayers, um, to support our annual budget. The, based on the calculation that I, I just fast-forwarded through, that you've heard before, um, calculates next year at 127.5 million dollars. So that's an increase of 3.8 million, um, or 3.1%. So if you remember a few slides ago, our expenditures are up 5.8 million, we're allowed to, um, increase the levy by 3.8 million. As you're aware by some of the information I handed out tonight that, and we'll talk about next time, but the revenue budget will probably be up by about a million dollars. So, you know, we're, we're kind of in the, the million-dollar range where we need to try to find either additional revenue or, um, reduce expenses or some combination thereof. So that's kind of where we are, um, at this particular time. Um, and to kind of give you an idea of where we're headed, at the April 2nd meeting, we'll talk about revenues, um, we'll talk more about the million dollars that, you know, we, we think we could add to the budget next year, uh, what the tax implications will be for our, our community, uh, what fund balances we plan to, um, include in the budget, try to offset the, the increases. And, um, on April 22nd, hopefully, we'll have a budget ready to be recommended to the Board of Education, and, um, after that, we're, we'll, uh, we'll do all of the, um, the outreach that we typically do to all our PTA, uh, groups and community members, including a budget hearing, and then obviously on May 20th will be the budget vote in Board of Education election. So that's where we're headed, um, and be happy to take in any other further questions, but thank you for your time.
I had a one question, I'd ask you, Samantha, you're sitting right next to me as the chair of the CBAC, when is that next meeting?
It is Monday, April 7.
Monday, April 7, and that's our group of community members who meet with board members, Tim and I, and we talk about the challenges that we're facing and sort of engage them in a discussion about where we are. So looking forward to that as well. Hopefully, we'll have more information for them when we meet. Is there any other questions from anyone? Well, this has been an exhausting budgetary process so far, um, extremely challenging. I think, uh, Tim, thanks for all your hard work and...
Yes.
Due diligence, much appreciated, and the presentation, as always, was really coherent.
Yeah, excellent job. Very coherent and thoughtful and great information, and we appreciate it.
All right, Madam President, back to you.
Okay. So back to the personnel report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, certificated personnel, one resignation, two resignation for the purpose of retirement, skipping three because we already approved. Number four, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Five, leave of absence without pay. Six, change of status. B, non-certificated personnel, one resignation for the purpose of retirement, two temporary appointment, SED clearance received, three extra compensation appointment, four change of status, C, other, one contracted service provider, two student-teacher observer, SED clearance received. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report? Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, approval of donation from the Harrison Ave School PTA, C, approval of motion to authorize litigation, C, acceptance of donation to establish the Mark Anthony Giordano Memorial Athletic Scholarship Fund, D, approval of CSE, CS, CSE, CPSE minutes, E, approval of CSE, CPSE recommendation, F, approval of CSE, CPSE annual review. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report? Second? Questions or comments? I would just like to say thank you for the generous donation from the Harrison Ave PTA. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I'll take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, contract for health services, Dobbs Ferry Union Free School District, B, contract for health services, the Rye City School District, C, contract for health services, Portchester-Rye Union Free School District, D, approval of contract with the County of Westchester, E, revised treasurer's report, January 2025, F, treasurer's report, February 2025, G, contract for health services, Byram Hills Central School District, E, Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's cooperative bidding, I, contract for educational services, Clearview School, J, contract award RFB number 24/25-16, supply and install wheelchair lift at Harrison Ave Elementary School, K, contract award RFB number 24/25-14, retaining wall at Parsons Memorial Elementary School, L, contract award RFB number 24/25-15, building addition E at the Purchase Elementary School, M, contract award RFB number 2425-15, building addition G at the Purchase Elementary School, N, contract award RFB number 2425/15 addition, building addition H at the Purchase Elementary School, O, contract award RFB number 2425-15, building addition P at the Purchase Elementary School, P, disposal of equipment, Q, approval of contracts to provide pass-through funds for special education services, R, resolution to appoint volunteer drivers, S, 2024-25 appropriation transfers, T, contract for health services, Elmsford Union Free School District, U, contract for health services, Scarsdale Public Schools, V, contract for health services, White Plains City School District, W, contract award RFB number 2425-17, classroom addition, contract G at the Harrison High School, X, contract award number RFB, sorry, contract award RFB number 2425-17, classroom addition, contract H at the Harrison High School, Y, contract award RFB number 24/25-17, classroom addition, contract P at the Harrison High School, Z, contract award RFB number 2425-18, baseball field upgrades, contract G at the Harrison High School, double A, bid rejection, RFB number 24/25-19, grounds equipment. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report? Second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just pointing out that we are approving the, the building of the Purchase School, that we're approving the building of the addition to the high school, uh, Rose Garden for additional classrooms and the baseball field. There's a lot of work in those approvals, so thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place here at Lewis M. Klein Middle School on April 2nd, 2025, 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a great night.